Go ahead and call this work session to order. Jeff, please call the roll.
Yes, Councilor Pizza.
Here.
Councilor Smallwood.
Here.
Councilor Sheldon.
Here.
Councilor Walker.
Here.
Councilor Exner.
Here.
Councilor Hopkinson.
Excuse.
And Mayor Pulliam.
Here. All right, well, work session, we have our parks, SDCs, and fee and lieu, just looking at our implementation strategies for possible increase. Rochelle, you want to kick us off?
Sure, absolutely. Well, good evening, Council Mayor. Thank you for this opportunity tonight to bring to SDC implementation options and our fee and lieu. And I with with me tonight, I have Don Robertson, who's the Parks and Chair Advisory Board member, and he's here representing the Parks Board's recommendation. So if we have any questions, he's going to have an opportunity to come up and say a few things. And then online, we also have FCS Group, which is Zachariah Hazel and John Giriladucci. And they'll be doing a presentation this evening to go through the implementation strategies and also help answering questions. But just real quick, before we dive into that, I just wanted to do a quick reminder of how we've gotten to where we've gotten to today and just a timeline. So staff's been working on these SDC fee and lieu methodology implementation and updating our methodology since September of 2021. And then FCS Group completed their SDC fee and lieu analysis in April of 2022. And we brought this updated methodology before the Parks Board May 5th, and then in front of the Council June 6th of 2022. And then on July 13th, the Parks and Trails Advisory Board convened to review four implementation strategies with the goal of recommending an implementation plan to the Council. And ultimately, the Parks Board discussed the need to increase both the parks' SDCs and fee and lieu parkland dedication, coming up with the fifth option that will be considered by Council tonight and before you're the presentation by FCS. So the reason that staff's been working towards this, understanding that it's a tough decision, we realized there's multiple ways to implement and increase. And that our fee we get is a larger piece of the whole pie. So therefore, as we were working through this process, we wanted to be mindful of the why behind the request on how to strategically implement and increase our parks' SDCs and fee and lieu. So I'm particularly looking forward to tonight's work session because we've been working towards this for close to a year. And with every milestone, and especially being a new director, it was exciting to see those progress made because it brings us closer to this conversation tonight about potentially implementing increases. So with an updated master plan and the realization that increases to SDCs will provide for partial funding for capital improvement projects. It also helps us because with this updated methodology, we not only have an improvement fee, but we have a reimbursement fee. And I wanted to underscore that because a reimbursement fee is the costs associated with capital improvements already constructed. We can reinvest back into our system and anything under construction when the fee is established. So reimbursement fee will help reinvest back into our infrastructure that we currently have our park system. So the other reason why it's important to evaluate raising parks' SDCs is because the fee has not been raised since 2016.
I'm sorry, just to pause really quick. So on reimbursement, it can go towards existing park improvements, not for new capacity, which is what SDC money has to go for, correct? So that's the big touch point there.
Yep, yep, yeah, thank you. So yeah, unfortunately, our fees have not been raised since 2016. So which is another positive reason why it would be great to discuss our implementation strategies tonight.
And just to clarify what he was saying, we didn't have a reimbursement fee.
We did not.
Okay.
Thank you. So the fee and lose the second and separate fee from parks' SDCs that was analyzed during this methodology update. So why it's important to increase fee and lieu parkland dedication is because as the city grows, we need to acquire land that provides for parks, recreation activities, natural spaces that will serve our growing community and our community members. A little bit of history, the fee and lieu and dedication of parkland was established in December 6th of 2004 at a rate of $241,000 cost per acre. And that cost per acre still remains the same in 2022 as it was when it was first established 18 years ago.
Are we, are you supposed to be going through the slides or?
No, they'll do that next.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Our currency, I'm just teeing it up, to make sure that, so our current fee and lieu is low, which results in developers opting to pay fee and lieu versus parkland dedication, leaving the department with funds not adequate enough to purchase property that matches the current cost per acre based on undeveloped planted land. So that is the other reason we're looking at the fee and lieu. And it's important to look at the option of reflecting what the true cost per acre will be for land that's in order to acquire future parkland dedication. So just a side note as guidance, the staff has also used council goals. So council goal number five, which is to maintain financial strength and sustainability and implementing fees to raise both the SDC and fee and lieu in keeping with Sandy's population is an important step to our financial sustainability strategy. And goal number eight is to expand recreation, align with community needs. So SDCs will help subsidize park development, repair existing infrastructure, and provide funding necessary to expand our park opportunities and amenities accessible for all. So my hope tonight for the work session is that the Council reviews the Park Board recommendation and then provide direction to staff, review Sandy's current SDC fee and lieu rates, and review Parks Board recommendation to increase SDC fee and lieu based on FCS's presentation, which is coming up next. And then provide comments and direction based on the Parks Board recommendation. And then with the direction provided tonight, we'd like to bring to Council two separate resolutions that would propose rate increases. The first resolution would be to raise SDC increases over a certain amount of time to a certain maximum. And then a second resolution to increase cost per fee for parkland dedication. And I'd like to.
Real quick before we move forward, just on terminology, so we have our SDCs, we have our fee and lieu. And then what's the reimbursement? Reimbursement is a fee and lieu type of program, correct? But it's.
The reimbursement, so there's, yeah, so there's two types of SDCs. There's the improvement fee and the reimbursement, and those are lumped into one single number that you'll see in the report tonight for SDCs.
And how do we decide what's being charged, whether it's a reimbursing or the other?
Yeah, so there's two numbers broken down in that SDC methodology that shows what we can charge for reimbursement fee and what we can charge for improvement fee. Yep. Yeah, I guess without further ado, I'd like to see if Don Robertson, if you have any comments or you want to speak to the Parks Board's recommendation.
Comfortable for you, this is work session. Yeah, 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 I mean, sit and do it if you want, that's fine. Well, actually, I'm sorry, Jeff, can the microphone pick him up okay though?
His voice tears pretty well, so.
All right, great. There you go, you're good.
Or a radio, radio.
First of all, I want to bother, I'm going to read something to you. Wasn't that many years ago that blew them off the top of my head, but now I find if I don't write down my thoughts, they may not be there when I want them. Just going to go ahead and jump into this. Thank you so much for being there. I want to take you back a little bit further on the way back time machine that went over Sheldon. Sounds funny for me to say, well, I'm kind of the old hand.
The dean.
Park and Trail Advisory Board now that Kathleen has graduated from the JV up to the varsity. Anyway, I'll do my best to go with that. But really, our story goes back another step. That was about three or four years ago, Sandy started recognizing that you needed a new master plan. And when we started working on that master plan, we kind of sketched out a very deliberate process to it. You know, we knew we needed to do certain steps along the way. So what we did was identify those kind of three big steps. The first one was to get the master plan, the second one was to fix our implementation language, and then the third one is where we are this evening or the beginning of where we are this evening. To do that, we really relied on a number of people. We've got a lot of turnover on the Parks and Trails Advisory Board. We brought in Nancy and Mamden, who did a great job shuffling the process forward for the master plan. And even though we're in the midst of pandemic, we've still heard a lot of really positive feedback. And we need to group that master plan and think you've taken action on the implementation language. A very significant piece to it. Well, before you, this evening is the critical third piece, or yes, doesn't agree you're learning about that critical third piece will come before you in a couple of weeks' time, hopefully. That's adjusting our fees. That's probably the most difficult of the three steps, although it might be the shortest of three steps. Our recent deliberations to get this evening's recommendation, they weren't easy. We're talking about fairly large numbers that can have a profound effect on our organizational goals. They'll also have impacts on the community, on the world's quality of life, our organizational reputation, and our economic viability. First is the issue of the SDCs. As Rochelle pointed out, we haven't adjusted those in six years. Yet we relied on them to build new parks, such as Bornstead Park, and to build trails and other amenities out there. Even though they have an increase, we kept up with inflationary requirements. As Rochelle pointed out, there's two different types of SDCs. And they've been around for a long time, both of them, even though you haven't had access to the second one, the reimbursement fee. It's not a new fee, it's been around for quite a while. The importance of it is being able to protect our investment. We've made millions of dollars in investments over the years in parks facilities, whether it's Miami or Johns Rude, or recently the Bornstead Park. All that is money that the community has put out. They want to protect it, they deserve to protect it, you deserve to have it protected. If something were to go wrong, that the water feature Bornstead Park or the big playground at Mining Park, we would be reliant on general fund or a significant donation or a very competitive grant process to replace those or to even get them back into a working condition. Well, I think we all know general funding type grants are extremely competitive. They're there, but they're very competitive. Everybody's always looking for a big whale to make that contribution, and sometimes it just don't exist. That's why the reimbursement is so important to us. You have the ability to protect those facilities. You're able to repair those, get them back open, otherwise we'd have to close them or remove them. And hopefully, one day, we'll replace them with something else. The the other portion of the word we're talking about this evening is our fees and the. And when I first came, Sandy came on board, we came into our sitting parts and started meeting with folks. We would have long, contemplative discussions about new development, whether to accept land, recommend for fees and the. And we would oftentimes say, well, this is a small development, we won't give you very much land, let's say, a fee and lieu. And that fee and lieu represented only a really small sliver of what the overall value of that land is worth. The idea of the fee and lieu is if we can't get a suitable piece to be able to use that, we can buy a piece. Well, at the amounts that we were charging, that just simply wasn't possible. It'd take decades to be able to get enough money to buy an acre of land. And that was just a reflection of when it was approved, I believe, somewhere in the 08 or several of 7, somewhere in that timeframe. Until now, having never been increased, yet we know perfectly well the values of land are substantial. The numbers that you're going to see on that are rather significant, but we believe that it's a very important piece to it. One of the things, one of the disincentives for developers at the time was, well, I can give you an acre of land where I can pay this little fee and be able to move on and make a lot of money. In other words, our citizens were basically underwriting a lot of the development that was going on out there. And so we think that it's time to make some adjustments in that area. And that's what you'll be seeing this evening. Before I turn it over to FCS, I do want to kind of go back and talk a little bit about all the consultants along the way, Rochelle's leadership as the new director, and our abilities to bring this before you for your consideration. It was a tough discussion when we came down to it, to look at the numbers and say, what's the right number? How do we make this recommendation? Because, believe me, as you're going to see, they're pretty good sized numbers. We worked hard, and we believe very much in what we're showing you tonight. But we also know that we're coming from a different perspective. We know that our job is to look after the park and rec interests of the community. Your job is to not just look out after the park and rec interests of the community, the full gamut of everything the community does, everything that the city serves our citizens with, not just our little sliver of pie. So forgive us for being a little biased and a little excited about what we're showing you this evening.
It's why you're on the advisory committee, we want you to be biased.
Well, we are. And we're excited. What we're showing you tonight goes from making our master plan not just aspirational, but achievable. That's our goal. So with that, I'll turn it back to Rochelle, who will introduce FCS.
Thank you, Don.
Thanks, Don. Thank you.
You did a great job, I didn't notice you were reading that at all. I wanted to say that, you served as a tax, so good job, thank you.
Okay, so yeah, we have John and Zach with us with FCS, and I see that their presentation is ready. Looks like John's online. So John and Zach, whenever you're ready, if you guys want to jump into your presentation.
Can you, can you see and hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you. So I will, I'm John, and Zach will be on if we have any, any detailed questions. I will quickly summarize the numbers, I won't go through the calculations, but just the, just the results for you. And then we'll talk about the different implementation scenarios or options that we presented to the, to the board and then their recommended phasing approach, which is as, as Mr. Robertson reported, took a lot of thought and deliberation to arrive, to arrive at that. So we can go to the, to the next slide. So the, and I know I'm looking off to the side here because my monitor isn't working, so I'm looking at my laptop here, so sorry if that's distracting. But the, the current park system development charge for the city of Sandy, as you see here, $3,717 for a single, a new single-family dwelling unit developing in the city. The fee and lieu, excuse me, $4,916 for a new single-family dwelling unit. So those are just to give you points of reference when you see the newly calculated numbers summarized in that table. We start with the fee per resident, and then we convert it to a dwelling unit charge based on the average occupancy. So the system development charge calculated, a defensible charge, $11,478 per resident. And then the fee and lieu, $5,911 per resident. So you see in the lower part of that table, when we apply the average occupancies, that single-family system development charge goes up to $31,333 and the fee and lieu $16,135. Based on updated occupancy averages, you see the resulting charges also for a multifamily dwelling unit and also for a mobile home, multifamily $23,231 and $11,963 for the SDC and fee and lieu respectively. And then for a mobile home dwelling unit, which has a slightly higher average occupancy than a multifamily dwelling unit, you see the resulting charges there as well. As Mr. Robertson warned you, these numbers are high. We'll show you on the next slide how they compare around the region. I will note also that the system development charge number here includes both the improvement fee and the reimbursement fee. In our report, we detail the two fees separately. So the city could decide to adopt something lower than that calculated maximum sing, system development charge. And it could also decide if it wanted to reduce one or the other of the two fees, the reimbursement fee and the improvement fee, which make up the total system development charge. So this is the comparison chart. Of course, everybody's park systems and needs are different, so we're comparing apples and oranges by definition. But this is just looking at the system development charge substantially higher, about double than the highest in the, in the area that currently being Lake Oswego. One bit of caution, we know a number of these cities and districts in the area are undergoing system development charge reviews right now. We're kicking off one with the city of Happy Valley next week. I'm presenting in the city of Sherwood tomorrow night. Their, their fee, if they choose to adopt it, will go up significantly from the number you see here. Just again, for perspective, the average of this set of comparables is a little over $7,200 for a single-family residence. And we're, we're just showing you that the single-family charges because they're the easiest bases of comparison across jurisdictions. So there are a couple of, yes.
Can you, you, you mentioned, I think, Happy Valley and Sherwood, is that right?
Yes, those are two that I know are either about to undergo updates or are undergoing or almost done with their updates.
The idea how those number, the proposed numbers compare to what's shown here of about $9,8500?
So Happy Valley, we haven't, we haven't started that analysis yet, so I can't tell you there. I can tell you, when we calculated the number that's shown there, the 8,990, or no, excuse me, the 8,515, the, the defensible, the calculated charge was much higher than that. It was over $20,000, and they chose to implement a reduced number. No telling if they'll do that again. Sherwood's number, again, if they, if they adopt it, will be in the range of that Lake Oswego charge.
So our average would go up quite a, quite a bit, okay?
That's right. And of course, that average is, you know, kind of ever-changing, and it's drawn on just this set of comparables. You could, you know, you could add or delete agencies from this list, and it would also change the average. But, but just to give you a sense.
So Don, Carl Exner here. In, in all these, you said that there's comparing apples and oranges a lot of cases. It just seemed like 31,000 is a pretty significant, larger number than the remaining other cities. How, how uncomparable are these numbers? So we're talking double from the nearest city, Lake Oswego. How are we not comparing apples to apples?
So it, it's hard to say without delving into each methodology and, and also trying to understand if they, if these agencies had adopted the full calculated charges. In some cases, like in Happy Valley's case, they adopted a lesser amount. But one of the things that, that is of, well, there are two main factors that will drive a higher park system development charge. One of them is the level of service that's currently being offered the citizens. So right now, citizens of Sandy enjoy, you know, a good level of service in parks. And so in order to determine what in the list of parks projects is includeable, that's one of the things we look at. If you're sustaining the current level of service and that's a high level of service, it's going to be costly to do that. And so that's one of the reasons that, that Sandy's charge is, is where it is. The other thing is, we're just seeing the cost of developing parks, like all other infrastructure, going up dramatically. And you'll see that in the fee and lieu calculation too, because that's made up of land costs. And those land costs have, you know, more than quadrupled from the numbers we looked that, that were quoted earlier as the basis of the current fee and lieu. So I, I think it's primarily those two, those two factors. And, you know, like I say, the, some of these cities or agencies have just made very different choices about the, the parks' services and, and facilities that they want to provide their citizens.
Can I ask one more question? Is there a, is there any factor into this, into the fact that some of these cities have like a levy or a bond that they go out to their voters to maintain strictly their Parks and Actranin or?
It, it's possible when there, when there is existing debt outstanding. So as a result of a, of a, of a bond issue or other external funding, we deduct that from the SDC calculation. So if there were, yeah, if there were significant grant funding or, or bonding that was done, you would credit that against the system development charge as part of the methodology. So it's possible that that's a factor.
John, this is Kathleen. So is, you know, when we talk about apples and oranges a little bit, Sandy's total includes parks and trails. And I believe I'm aware that some of these cities do not have a trails development fee. Is that, and then my second part of that question is that we also have, you know, I can think of four off the top of my head, parks that we've acquired the land but have not developed it, which kind of puts us a little bit behind the eight ball, trying to get those, you know, those projects in the tier one done. Can you kind of speak to both those, the, the trail section, and then the fact that we've got kind of a backlog of parkland undeveloped?
Yeah, so some, some do and some don't as far as including trails and trails plans. So you're, you're right about that. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head from this list which ones do and which ones don't, but that, that, that is a potential factor. As is, so the, the interesting thing about acquiring acreage is it, it becomes part of your level of service standard, which is, is expressed as an amount of acres per thousand in population. So that contributes to a, a high level of service that's being offered in, in acreage. And then you have the cost of developing out that acreage to provide park facilities that will meet the needs of the existing population and growth. So I think both of those could be, could be factors. But again, without going into each of these different methodologies in detail, it's hard to say for sure.
Great. Just go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So among the options that the city has now, now that these numbers, you know, have been calculated, are to adopt the calculated system development charge, that being the 31,000, and we'll come back to the fee and lieu. There's always an option of, of adopting something up to that calculated amount. And as long as you don't exceed that amount, the city has that, has that freedom. There are also a multitude of phasing options, and this is, this has been a popular solution to issues like this, popular with the development community because it allows them to plan and budget for escalating system development charges. And you can also choose how high you want to phase to, you know, what your target will be, and over what period you phase the charges. The, one of the things that the statute provides for is indexing the charges for inflation. So that's something else while you're phasing to also try and keep pace with inflation, that, that's an option as well. So we developed several, four different specific options for the board to, to look at. And their recommendation departed slightly from these, from these options. One was to phase it in over five years. So start at the current charge and then phase up to the full amount over five years, 10 years, and 15 years. So those were three options we looked at. And then we also said, okay, what if you just set the charge at the current average and left it there? That would be, that would also be an option. And of course, there are an infinite number of options in between. We just wanted to provide something to respond to. As part of that last one, we said, okay, accompany that with the full implementation of, of the fee and lieu. And that was a, not to, not to spoil the fee and lieu discussion, but that seemed to be a, an important piece of any of the phasing options was to move to the full fee and lieu right away because that represents a real land value in the city of Sandy. And if a developer's making a decision to pay the fee and lieu, they should be paying the full cost of land in lieu of actually dedicating land. So that, I hope I'm paraphrasing the, the board's opinion on that. So here's what the numbers look like for those different scenarios. You can see five, after five years in 2027, in that left hand of column there, you're up to the 31,000. in that left hand of a column there, you're up to the 31,333 and these don't have, inflation or assumed inflation built in, but that would be, or certainly could be a feature of any of these options. 10 year phase in, you see, uh, achieved in 2032 and then 15 year phase in, achieved in 2037. One of the, uh, and we, uh, the city of Hermiston is adopting a, long-term phasing schedule like that 15-year one. And one of the reasons they're doing it is because, they know that future councils, you know, five years down the road or 10 years down the road could decide, they'd had enough with the phasing and sort of step off that, that track. Um, so that was one of the advantages of the long-term phasing. And then again, set to the average SDC, you see that in the far right column. So, uh, and I'm trying to look and see if this was the recommended scenario. Yeah, the, so the board's recommended approach was to start at the average. So to take a significant jump from the current, park SDC and move to the average. And, and the number that's shown here in 2023 as, uh, January 1st of 2023, is that average with projected inflation. So it's a little bit of a moving target, but the 7,435. And then from that point on, phase in four more steps up to a maximum of 20,000. Um, so not try to achieve the full, uh, $31,000 calculated fee. And then, uh, also index those charges to inflation for each year. So the actual target would be higher than 20,000, because of, uh, the indexed inflation. So that's the board's recommendation for the SDCs. And for the fee and lieu, you see here that that, uh, the recommendation is to move to the full fee and lieu, uh, as soon as possible. Um, for a single family dwelling unit, you see that charge would be 16,000, um, 135. Well, you see that, you see that the charges there based on, the city's current by census, average occupancies. One of the interesting things about the fee and lieu and the city's code actually assigns, occupancies that are different from those, um, that are in the most current census, those being three, two and two. So, the city would have the option of sticking with its current occupancies, but, uh, like I say, we, we, uh, recommend moving toward these because they're based on the most current census information. So a, a lot to, uh, absorb there. Um, but that's, uh, that's all of our prepared material.
I don't know if I, maybe I missed it. One of the things I'm kind of left wondering is, is the nuance of, of that SDC, how much of it to pick to be reimbursing versus new capacity, right? Both those limits are in the same SDC. And, and maybe I'm thinking about this wrong. So if somebody knows different, you know, set my brain right, please. But like, when I'm thinking of like, timber, like these pocket parks, like Timberline Trails Park, but my neighborhood park, right? So if we were going to put a new swing set in there, could I use SDC money? Like, could I use new capacity SDC money for that swings? That's an existing park. So that ha- that has to be paid for with reimbursing.
We would need to use reimbursement dollars to replace the.
Even though I'm not replacing it, this would be a brand new swing set.
I believe we could still use reimbursement dollars on an existing park. So to add an amenity, the, the problem with, with using development fees, because you have to show a nexus of benefit to increase population or increase demand for those specifics.
Not that just that it's a new swing set.
Exactly. It does increase capacity. That's the key word.
Yeah, but it's, you're looking at a small neighborhood park that has a service area of less than a half.
So, and you guys know more about what you want out of this conversation than I even do. So if I take this up on the wrong track, please.
Oh.
You know, correct me here, but.
Absolutely.
But one of my, cause one of my biggest concerns when I think just about our parks in general, is I, I mean, you guys, I don't know if there's just a lot of kids out there. And I'm sure there will be if there's a new neighborhood, everyone wants a certain park next to them. But like, we don't necessarily want more okay parks. The people I talk to, we want better parks that we currently have. Yeah, we want better products coming out of our parks. And so as I, as that's all going on in my head, I'm trying to think, well, how do I put that into like an SDC schedule, right? Like, how do we create better parks out of our current allotment of parks, while also realizing that we need, newer parks to come along? Cause everybody wants a park to be where, by, next to where they live, right?
And one of the things that John says, bear in mind, John, correct me if I'm wrong here, because it wouldn't be the first time, it's gonna be the last. But the SDCs that we're showing you, all that $30,000 per, per unit for dwelling, that consists of roughly two thirds development fees and one third, in round numbers, one third reimbursement. So that's, that's both those fees rolled into one.
Right. So one third of it's basically reimbursement.
And, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna rely on Zach to confirm that. Um.
Yes, that, that is correct. That is correct.
The, the one thing I will also say, and Zach, uh, chime in here too, if I'm, if I'm off the mark, but, um, the, of the projects to be constructed, um, which include, developing out some parks which are currently undeveloped. When you are, when you are putting planned amenities on those parks, there is still a portion of those which is improvement fee eligible. And when you are, and when you are, uh, constructing, uh, parks or adding acres, uh, then those are substantially improvement fee eligible. So, you, you still have improvement fee eligible, even when you are adding amenities on existing acreage. Um, there's not as, not as much eligibility. Um, and then you can also spend reimbursement fee revenue on those, on those amenities.
And so correct me if I'm wrong, one of the things that, that FCS did was go through a look at all of our tier one, tier two kinds of projects. And said, this one would be eligible for this percentage of development fees, this portion of it would not. And so, you know, building a park to establish a deer meadow, your field. Deer Point, okay. Over there, that's an established neighborhood. We're not going to get a lot of, uh, new residents going in there. But then I'm waiting forever for that part, right? Well, because it's an established neighborhood and we need to show some benefit, it may not qualify for quite as high of a percentage of, development SDCs as maybe a brand new neighborhood would. So we're having to make up some differences. Sometimes some of those differences can be tweaked, made up a little bit with some of the reimbursement also. But it, you know, still may not cover absolutely everything. So SDCs are really important tool in the, in our tool belt. But it's not the only tool that people are gonna need. It's just a big piece of that.
Stan, when you were talking about, like, I'm, I'm in full agreement there, um, as far as that. I know in talking to, you know, like Kelly and that, like, one of the challenges is in Sandy, we don't really get those big developments that right there.
That's right.
And so we end up with the little pocket parks like that are in our, in our neighborhood stuff, which create a lot of challenges. I really like the fee and lieu being raised, because I think that gives us a more, a bigger land bank, right? To have a good chunk of money there. To, to purchase bigger chunks of land to build the awesome part, right? Or the, the more mining style, something that really draws people through. Instead of where we kind of keep ending up with all these little, pocket parts. And now we gotta ask a developer to change where the part goes and just all the challenges that we've had just a short time that I've been up here. So, I think that's kind of.
The other thing too, pocket parks are nice. Down a three-year-old, you're walking up.
Right.
A black issue. The ironic part of it is it probably costs as much money to drive that part to maintain it as it does to maintain that part.
Right.
And so, you know, you're spending a lot of windshield time, a lot of dollar, trying to get someplace just to take care of something small.
So how are you doing on participation? I'm checking a car out and I heard a little sound out of here. So we'll, are you okay?
I, I've got some questions.
Carl, Jeremy, then we'll go to Laura. Okay. Let's start with Carl.
So I see a different levels. You've got phased in, we've got, uh, stay in average. We've got different, um, numbers that we're talking about. What do those two different things cost me? So the $30,000, um, that sounds like it's the, the best there is. It's kind of the Cadillac of the show. We got parks being built and, new ones being established and so on. And at the $7,000, we're going to get to things mode and we, we don't do much else. Is that kind of what I'm seeing there? What's the differences in those?
We can't do that for the sake of this conversation. I think that the big difference is we have a number of projects identified. If we were to jump into that $30,000 category, which blame me, there wasn't a single one of us that didn't want to do that right off the bat. We all wanted to. Um, but we also want to practice a little restraint. So we jumped into that, we're able to move very quickly through all of our tier one and tier two projects and get, a lot accomplished in a short window of time. But for every dollar we're leaving on the table of those SDCs, that's a dollar or less that we're doing. So if we're cutting down, our SDCs by half, one could logically say, well, that means we're going to get half the value back for those, going to have those projects. So the reality is we're losing more than half because of inflation and time.
So it's just primarily a, a timing thing. So we've still accomplished these master plan projects, but they would be pushed out there farther and farther. And maybe even a drop because of the cost.
Or we can all do all these in a hundred.
Yeah, I mean, at some point they don't.
Right. If you have the inflation going on, you're eventually going to lose money and it'll go back. Although, like you said earlier, a new council could come in here and up it, down it. All kinds of things.
Yeah, Oregon law doesn't allow you guys to hand up a new council to, uh, uh, future extension.
Right, John? They, they, they sure try.
Yeah, um, so a reimbursement, uh, the reimbursement money can be used anywhere in the city? Or does it have to be within a certain area of that element that it's coming from?
Uh, we have a lot more flexibility. I'll be currently experts on this. We have a lot more flexibility with reimbursement fees than we do with the development fees. Um, John, did you want to jump into that?
That, that is exactly right. Yeah, you could spend, as long as it's on, capital, you know, on, on parks, infrastructure. It doesn't have to be on growth related parks. It can be spent anywhere in the city.
Then why would we? And I know you got, why would we only, why would it only comprise a third of the overall SDC if it's that much more flexible?
The, the, uh, the law constrains us by, by, by rule, basically, how you calculate and what we have to consider, that, that fee has to be based on, unused capacity in the existing park system that's available for future users. And so, we have to mathematically arrive at what that amount of unused capacity is. And it just so happens that it's about one third of the total. Um, and, and the bulk of the money is in the improvement fee in the planned projects.
No, but, but I, I like to look at it in this regard. When I think of SDCs, um, for development, that's what new residents are going to end up paying to areas forward and meet the demands of just them being, when I look at the reimbursement fees, that's the buy. They're still going to go to Bornstead. They're still going to go to the Johns, or they're still going to go over here to mining. They're going to do all these things. They're basically buying back into that system for what you guys as long-term residents have, have already invested in. They're helping to pay you guys back.
Um, and then the money in lieu of can be used, uh, anywhere in the city.
The money in lieu of is, uh, was, again, that's, that's a, kind of dictated by a couple of things, state law and city ordinance. Um, that's probably the way we use for acquisition.
That was great. Yeah. Um, and so, and I know we had gotten sued and we lost, um, back in the day with, uh, 4G, Baziani and, and that when we wanted to do some work in mining park here for the bathrooms.
We didn't lose. They, they, it was dismissed because, because they didn't file in time. But yes, had it gone.
It went, it, it, we might have. It cost us a lot of money to, uh, fight this. But anyway, we might have, regardless of, uh, anyway, but that was using SDCs in other places that were already established areas in that. I hadn't heard of the reimbursement. Maybe I haven't, I'm, I'm, uh, not remembering it. Uh, but, uh, cause we always use money in lieu of our, our SDCs. So that's a new thing that I had in.
New to Sandy.
New to Sandy, which, uh, that's really, I have based my stuff on. But my recollection is even before being on council, we've only, correct me if I'm wrong, we've only bought one piece of property for a park and that's Bornstead Park, with money. It was a million dollars. We took a loan out for it and then we used the money in lieu of to pay it off. Is there any other places?
Sandy River had, we, we.
Did we use?
That involved some.
Did we use a little bit from that?
It was, it was some trust for public.
Fifty, yeah, it was a cash. It was some cash and some other things. Uh, that was so cheap that, I don't count that, but, but the idea behind the money in lieu of was to buy a big piece of eight, five acres. And, and we did that and we spent the next 10 years or whatever, paying that off, through that. And then we just haven't done that particular thing, you know, over and over again. Well, we have more money in the, in that, that, that account than we had back then. Uh, a lot more money. We just haven't anything with that in that aspect of it, or if not available, but the price land also went up too. But we bought Farneff out. So when we bought it, it wasn't surrounded right. It wasn't right next to a neighborhood that was going to be developed. Yeah. We had a fourth thing. Yeah, 10, 15 years in it. But, um, yeah. And then just last thing, Laurie, um, the, the pricing that I saw there is fabric casting. Um, it's like, if you go to that high, and maybe I'm missing something there. I'll speak for myself. I wouldn't want to go that high. We just basically saying no more development in Sandy. Um, if we were that number, and maybe I'm jumping ahead way too far, but I just, uh, you know, we go to the big numbers. So.
Uh, my question is, say five, 10 years down the road, we have maybe, maybe sooner, uh, we have a parks and trails.
I mean.
Yeah, district. That's the word I was looking for. What happens to this money then? What happens to all of this? Where's it go?
That's your choice. Uh, if a, if a park district were to form, that would be part of a negotiation that you'd want to do with the park district. And that can turn out a lot of different, you know, variety of ways. Oftentimes cities that are included within, such as Milwaukee, um, I think there was a, was there a comparable, John, for Milwaukee?
Oh man, I, I can't, I can't remember if they were on the list. They are, they are part of North Clackamas, uh, Park and Rec District, I think. Is that, is that where you're going, Don?
Yeah, Milwaukee chose to be a part of the park district. They chose to keep, um, an advisory board intact. They chose to continue to collect their fees. Um, and they chose to both use, uh, plug into the park district to buy land, but also to supplement, that acquisition with some of their own money, uh, direct fees. So, and they chose to continue owning that property, which they bought, whether it was historical or new.
But sorry, but the city, it sounds like the city collects the fee and then we, we negotiate with the rec, how we disperse it.
Exactly. In North Clackamas's case, the county collects the SDCs with them incorporated. Where were those improvements?
You good, Lori?
Yeah, yeah. Well, it just, that just seems odd to me because you're, you're getting, you're getting taxed here and then you're getting taxed here.
And you, you're just hoping the city negotiates and sends the money over there really. And now.
Well, I. That was the question I had is if you had a parks district, for example, to, to buy ball fields and, yeah, just ball fields and, and you're going to, do, you're going to get some money for that to acquire that land through a bond or something like that. Wouldn't that then reduce our total, uh, $49 million, you know, plot of projects by whatever?
Yeah. And again, that's council's choice. The council wants to, to raise or lower, as long as you stay under that, that 31,000 today methodology, you can raise and lower that dollar amount.
Well, and the same question has to do with like, you know, if district, paid for, or if we got like a grant for, you know, $600,000 for something. And, you know, the total was, you know, 12 million or 1.2 million or something. We got a grant for half of it. Does that, mean that we can reduce the SDCs to reflect that?
You can raise and lower those SDCs at your discretion. You don't have to do that, but you can. Right, John?
The, the, yes, the, and the, the one thing that the law, uh, says, and we, and we take great care to make sure that this doesn't happen, is that you can't collect SDCs for the same facilities or the same capacity twice. So if, if there were a district that began to collect system development charges or. if there were a district that began to collect system development charges or charge them, based on, you know, a list of projects that it was going to construct, you'd have to make sure that those were not also on the city's list. And the city was also charging for those. Um, that could set you up for, uh, for trouble. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I'm going to have to step out here for a minute, so I'm going to jump ahead. Feel free to go back to where you're at. But I just want to, uh, say, first of all, uh, I read the staff report and that. And so I want to say thank you for all your, your work on this and, and I respect the the challenging conversation, I'm sure it was, and, and to actually talk yourself down from all the, the ideas. Um, I personally am for this, uh, and, and for what's in the staff report. Um, I agree with that. And it's on two premises. The first premise is I think, uh, our fee in lieu needs to match what it's going to cost us to collect that land. Um, and so that is, that is market driven and, and we need to reveal and reflect that. And then in regards to the system development charges, um, I've heard, you know, it's stated that, uh, I want, um, that it's a challenge for the people to buy houses here and I fully get that and understand that. The thing is though, us raising these is only going to, one, it's, the developer is going to charge at the end of the day, the market value for that house, which is based on what other people around here are willing to pay for it. If the SDCs cut into their profit margin, that's, that's, that's on that. But at the end of the day, if somebody's willing to pay seven hundred thousand dollars for a house or six hundred thousand, put your number in there, that's what that developer is going to sell that house for, not, not based on our system development charges. So what's important to me is to make the, the community and to use the money to improve our projects that we have on our thing and to make the community the most livable and best we can. And I feel like given inflation and everything that we're at, um, I would be for incremental, uh, as well, it does say incrementally over a five or a ten year period. But ultimately, I think that that's, uh, that's where we need to be based on those. And those are just my thoughts. So thanks for, appreciate.
But you got to leave right away or?
I, I got.
What I disagree on is is that the market value is competitive to some degree. And certainly the last four or five years now, we've had thirty thousand, fifty thousand, seventy, I've heard a hundred thousand dollars overpriced of what we think an appraisal would come in at. People are willing to buy just to be able to get. Will that stay though? Because it wasn't many years ago that houses were staying on the market for months and months. And in fact, going for less than and appraising out less than. So it, it is a market driven thing. Yeah, I agree with you. But I, to say that thirty thousand dollars, wow, that's, for me, that's a big goal.
Well, the, the staff report says twenty thousand and I, and I would argue in five to ten years, that, that twenty thousand is going to look a lot different.
That's, I, we haven't got to that conversation.
That's what I'm saying. I'm just, I, I'm jumping ahead because I have to go. But the, the other piece of that I would argue is, is I look at all the developments around here and I've watched their little signs. Homes from this go up and up and up and up. And so, and, and they have already paid the system development charge. So they're, they're not basing that.
The smaller one, the one that's in place now.
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm saying a system development charge had nothing to do. It was based on how many, who wanted to pay for the house, keeps raising the price.
There, there was some labor and some materials in there.
Absolutely, absolutely. But also at the end of the day, if someone's not willing to pay six hundred thousand dollars for that house, you'll do, uh, one thing. You'll either find a cheap, you know, somebody to come in to do it for market value, or you will, uh, you just remember all that. Well, those are the two things. And then ultimately, that's a business decision, which is what I'm making this decision on. It's a business decision for the city so that we can.
Yeah, sorry, guys.
Do you have something else, Laurie?
No, go ahead.
I think one of the, I'm, I'm trying to understand. So, so the, is the recommendation on page forty three? Uh, so basically it says, starting at seventy four, thirty five, the average, and then going up, um, increasing it, uh, for the next till twenty twenty six to twenty thousand.
Yeah, that doesn't include indexing for.
Inflation. And then what happens after twenty? Does it go up further after twenty seven?
We have another conversation before that part.
I'm sorry, sorry, that twenty twenty three dollar figure, I'd like to see that go up just, you know, a little bit higher, just to kind of reflect more like, you know, Sherwood and Happy Valley, um, especially since they're already, you know, this is what they had before and they're already planning to up that. So I'd be, you know, you say the average, I actually, the average in the park board report was more like eighty eight thousand and something. Um, and I don't know if you took Sandy out of it and then it changed the average or what. But I, like I said, my preference would be to see twenty twenty three go up closer to, you know, Happy Valley and Sherwood to start with. And then I would just say that again, you know, the importance to me is seeing like the Deer Point neighbors who have not had a park all this time. I, I don't quite understand why we wouldn't be able to use full SDCs because there's no capacity for a park there now. I would like to see the Deer Point, you know, the, the Champion Way folks that don't have a park, the Ponder Lane, those folks that are going to get a park.
And when we come back, uh, when it's time to the big action for you folks, we'll see if we can remember to break some of those numbers, just so you can.
Yeah.
What percentage we can spend on there.
Yeah.
But everything is very rigid.
I know. Yeah, yeah. And, and okay, my last question is, so mining park, because Jeremy made a great point about bringing that up. And the thing that, you know, I, because I was in the middle of all, I mean, I was kind of involved in all that, but the thing there was we were going to put in a dog park, which again, was a new facility and we didn't have one and we needed one in Sandy and we were going to change out all those god awful trails, you know, paved trails that are just impassable almost and make them barrier free, which was a huge increase. And so I just would like a little bit more feedback from those guys as to, you know, when you have an existing park, but you're basically doing a whole new facility that it doesn't exist, or you're opening it up to a whole new population. I, I realize the trails can't be a hundred percent built, paid for, but.
Maybe we can put together another example of that.
We just got a few minutes left over. Uh, where are we at? What we got to do?
So it, well, what they're looking for is an overall recommend, our feelings on their overall recommendation, right? Which is, it looks like they're going to a twenty, uh, twenty thousand dollar SDC implementation over the course of two twenty thousand or the course of five years with a promise to Don that we'll have a conversation at the end of the five years to revisit, uh, that amount. Um, and then they're tiering that. What page was that? Can I direct him to in the?
Zach, can you put that slide up again?
It's page, it's page six on the slide.
Maybe set up page six on the slide. But that's, that's the implementation. I'm good with the, not to just be disagreeable, but I, I'm pretty good with the implementation of the rate. I know, you know, of course, everyone heard Christine, Christine. Kathleen's interest in, um, and increasing the, uh, the SDC in year twenty twenty three.
Can you guys show, I mean, you did a great job on the five and the ten and all that, showing what percentage of projects would not go forward in the tier one, for example? Can you guys for the next time kind of bring that forward? So we kind of know what this, what we're not getting with this?
We can, yes.
Yes, we can do that.
I, I realize there's some choices involved in there, but yeah.
That's my concern. This is where, where are we at with what we get? I, I got to say the thirty thousand, even the twenty thousand is a bit high for me. I know that Richard doesn't feel like that's going to be a big issue in terms of what costs are to the house. But if we do change markets, I think that a twenty thousand dollar increase will make a difference in how the marketing is going on. Now, I'm aware also that I've got a couple of different appraisers tell me that Sandy is a cheap place to be. But we don't, parks and recreation isn't the only SDC we've blessed.
No, they're not.
So there's a, there's another component in there. So we're talking twenty grand if we use this phased in plus roads, trails, sidewalks. So, so what, what do we have total? I guess that would be my question too. Come back to me with, what are we talking about? The total SDCs?
Yeah, we can bring that back at the next meeting.
You told SDC for park or told SDCs?
For everything, for all five services. Okay.
We showed the council a few months back now, I guess it was, when we were looking at rate increases, what, what, uh, average building permit looks like for new residents. We can put together something similar to that again with, uh, the proposed SDC increases here. Uh, as you know, we're likely going to be bringing up water and sewer SDC increases in the next couple of months as well. Stick to the ordinance that says annual increases. Um, so.
My, my problem is that I don't want to do it piecemeal. I, I get the part, we got to do some stuff with our parks and trails. I, I'm fully on board with that.
Or believe me, that was the, that was the hard part, part of the session. I was trying to figure out what. I remember this way, we all want a science answer, right? We all want, this is a math problem, but it's not math and it's not science. This is art. And so we need to figure out what fits where, how it fits together. And that's really why we, we stopped at what we did and not said, hey, we need to jump right into all of it. Our job as parks are not, we're not, we, we understand that you guys have a way broader scope than we. We appreciate exactly what you're saying. Doesn't mean that we're wrong. No, no, we're totally right.
Oh, good. I, I did hear that. But just from, for me, the fee in lieu, I'm, I'm really in agreement with that part. It doesn't seem like that's a big issue for me. But it's, it's the SDCs I struggle with.
Yeah, I'm, I'm struggling with the same thing. I, I'm, I'm, I'm all for the parks. Don't get me wrong. I'm all for increasing it. But then there's just what we did years ago when we tried to increase all the building permit or all the fees there. It was just like, all trying to do it. You know, once, I know it's five years, but five years is kind of a small for this amount of money going up. My opinion, it's like at one day, my son's turning fifteen, ten years from now, that I would love to be able to afford a house in Sandy, right? Like, you know, the whole point about wanting your kids to come back near you to live and not have to go somewhere else. And I get it, we need to be able, inflation's happening. Uh, but, um, housing is just in, in some ways getting to, uh, unattainable. Um, and there's a lot of factors in that. And I get that. And I get that we have to have that. But it's just the needs some thinking. And maybe fifteen years is better than five years because it's just, wow.
Jeremy, I'm going to put, I'm going to push back a little bit because I, I, I know where your heart is because my heart a lot is in a lot of the same place. And you talk about, uh, you know, your son turning fifteen. And, you know, I'm sitting here and the first thing I thought of is, man, I've heard Jeremy complain for the last, since we've been talking last four years about the level of parks and ball field.
Oh, yeah, I know. That's why, that's why I say, I, I'm for it.
Place back a little, right? It's, you know, available. And I'm like, you, let, let's go get those things.
Well, you got to look at both sides of it, right? Like this, it's not just about the one thing. It's also a holistic look at it. And sure, I could put that hat on and be that, but then I'm not, I don't think, looking at it from all sides of the ball.
Well, you have to.
And that's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah.
I guess we deserve it just as much as like us.
Hold on, that's a whole nother deal.
I want people with average incomes being able to live.
Yeah, that's right.
Right.
That's right.
We're hearing some consensus on fee and lieu, uh, full implementation there. But it's some consensus.
No, I think, yeah.
And then maybe when we come back, a couple of options on implementation.
Yeah, and then also what the full package SDC.
Okay.
I, yeah, I hear Kathleen saying a little bit of eight, eight, and I hear on the years. Um, yeah, I mean, show us what, but just because you go to ten, may, you know, if you go to ten, maybe it's a twenty five thousand dollar. You, you're getting to twenty five over ten years instead of twenty over five. You know what I mean? Like, I, I hope what you're hearing trying to sum up all the different back and forth we had is, I think you're, I'm sensing an increase. We need to do more. It's how much and over how many years.
Yeah, that's our job to pull together some of those.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Don's sharing the sixty thousand dollars. All right, all right. Cool. I wish it was a little bit more clear, but I think that is where we're at right now. So, yep.
Thank you.
All right, cool. Thank you, Don. Great presentation.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead and call this, uh, city council meeting to order. Please, uh, join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Jeff, let's call that rolling in. So Pete's here, Councilor Smallwood.
Here.
Councilor Sheldon. Uh, excused for now, and then he'll be here. Okay, Councilor Walker.
Here.
Councilor Exner.
Here.
Councilor Hopkinson. Excused. And Mayor Polian. Uh, here. All right, welcome everyone. Welcome to our city council meeting, uh, light agenda tonight. Uh, I'll be calling for any changes to the agenda. I'll be then asking for public comment. Sounds like we do not have any public comment. That was signed up for at the meeting or online, so we'll move beyond that. There's no response to last meeting's public comments, as there wasn't any in that meeting. Uh, we'll then go to the consent agenda. In that, there's our city council meeting minutes, July eighteenth, uh, as well as the authorization of tri-met, uh, sub-recipient agreement. Under old business, we have a public hearing on, uh, well, I mean, we all know what it's on. Um, and, uh, so there is two that are, uh, we have two public comments, uh, that have been given for that public hearing. So we'll be ready for that. Under new business, nothing under new business. We'll have a report from, uh, this week's city manager, Tyler Dean. And then we'll do the, uh, committee and council reports and adjourn the council meeting for the evening. So the mayor go back home for his anniversary. So everybody has that in their head. Got to get home for the anniversary. Okay. With that, uh, let's go ahead and go to any changes to the agenda. All right. See, no proposed changes. Let's go to, uh, we're going to skip past public comments. That's none nor submitted. Let's go to the consent agenda. Is there a discussion or a motion to adopt?
I wasn't at the, uh, uh, eighteenth, so I will, uh, with, uh, staying from voting on that one, but I can vote on the other ones. So I don't know if you want to pull those out or what.
Do you have any?
I was at both of them, so I can.
We have, we have a quorum to get through it. So let's just get through it, I think. So.
Staying from both or?
Yeah, just abstained from the consent.
I'll sit, okay, yeah.
And move that we accept the consent agenda.
There's a second.
I'll second it.
Just putting it further in the.
Change through the agenda. We'll pull that out. So let's go ahead, change it back to changes to the agenda. We're going to go ahead and pull up the consent. I mean, we're going to pull up the city council meeting minutes from the last one and put it into a future.
Was Councilor Sheldon at that meeting? If he was, we could just postpone this one to later in the meeting and do the whole thing.
All right, let's put consent agenda at the end of the day. All right. Moving forward into old business. And I open this public hearing for state ordinance number twenty twenty two dash eighteen at seven fourteen PM. Uh, Jeff, you have the staff report.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, the decision in front of the council tonight is whether to adopt and refer to the voters' prohibition on psilocybin service centers and the manufacture of psilocybin products within city limits. So the background of this is that, uh, state measure one oh nine was passed by Oregon voters in twenty twenty, allowing for the manufacturer delivery administration of psilocybin, uh, commonly known as mushrooms at licensed facilities. Uh, the OHA, the Oregon Health Authority, has begun, but has not yet completed the rulemaking process to implement measure one oh nine. And will be, uh, begin accepting applications for psilocybin licenses in January of twenty twenty three. There are four different types of licenses, as was discussed last time. Those are included in the staff report. Um, so under the law, cities, uh, cities have the option of imposing prohibitions on psilocybin businesses within their jurisdictional boundaries. If such restrictions are approved by, by a majority of city voters at a general election. So at the last, uh, council meeting, the council discussed this issue and weighed the pros and cons of the different regulation options. Uh, and then the council asked staff to proceed with preparing an ordinance that would prohibit psilocybin businesses within city limits to be referred to the voters at the November eighth, twenty twenty two, general election. Uh, with the advice of the city attorney, the council at the last meeting discussed the possible option of adopting a prohibition now and potentially repealing it at some point in the future and replacing it with more targeted time, place and manner regulations in the development code. Um, so the next steps moving forward is if the council adopts the ordinance in front of you this evening and the accompanying resolution, the next step will be for staff to publish notice in Sandy Post, as well as on our website for the seven day ballot title challenge period. After the seven days have elapsed, if no challenges are filed in the circuit court, the council will certify the end of the challenge period, after which staff will file the final paperwork, including the ballot title and explanation with the county elections office by the September eighth deadline.
Awesome.
And, uh, Chris Green is on the line as well, if there are any further process questions.
Okay, great. Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. I'll now go into instructions for public testimony.
I'll now go into instructions for public testimony. Uh, please try to avoid repetition if someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. It is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. For those joining us in, uh, joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand to indicate you would like to speak and wait to be recognized. If you're participating online, click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating on via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I'll call on each person when it's their turn to speak. Each participant will receive up to three minutes to testify. The city recorder will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. Our council rules do require each person to state their name and address for the record. I'll now call on all testimony on the proposed ordinance, just a reminder, you have three minutes each. I have a couple signups, uh, Nathan Rashmison.
Okay. Hello. I've come here from a neighboring community, my address is twenty-seven hundred West Powell Boulevard, apartment three two five in Gresham. And I just, uh, wanted to give a personal perspective on the, uh, the business at hand. I've watched for the last probably ten years as the research on psychedelic therapies has, uh, begun its, uh, long revival. And, uh, watched the pros and the cons, heard about it from lots of different angles, decided a few years ago that it was something I might be interested in pursuing. Uh, a reliable witness informed me that I didn't jump off any balconies or street through the streets or anything. I did experience an increase of peace and self-understanding in two areas that had been very troubling to me. And that has lasted now, it's been a couple of years. So, uh, just wanted to give that perspective on kinds of establishments that you're considering regulating here. That's all, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you very much. All right, Shelley.
Hi, councilors, uh, my address is twenty-seven hundred West Powell Boulevard, apartment three twenty-five in Gresham. Um, I should say upfront that my comments tonight do not reflect my position as an employee of the city of Sandy. Uh, and that I am speaking only as a member of the public. Um, I should also add that talking about this in this setting feels rather vulnerable. Um, and I'm gonna be sharing a couple of kind of personal things. Uh, but if I didn't know that each one of you are thoughtful and deliberate and, uh, really wanna do right by Sandy, then I wouldn't, I wouldn't be spending my time doing this. Um, so I could focus my comments tonight on the volume of research published in peer-reviewed journals on the therapeutic potential of clinically administered psilocybin. I could talk about the land use and planning issues posed by the citing of psilocybin manufacturing in clinic facilities. Um, or I could talk about the experiences of other people for whom psilocybin has been an invaluable medical resource. But instead, uh, I'm gonna talk about me. Um, I have lived with severe chronic treatment-resistant depression and anxiety for most of my life. Um, additionally, I've been diagnosed with PTSD as a result of a long series of traumatic events from my childhood. Um, I've been in therapy for more than a decade and I have been prescribed more medications than I can remember the names for. Um, around twenty eighteen, about four years ago, things got really bad and really dark. And I got to the point, long story short, of being convinced that, uh, the only workable solution would be to not be alive anymore. Um, it was around that time, a friend of mine sent me an article published in a two thousand seventeen issue of the Journal of Neuropsychopharmacology. That talked about the history of clinical research on psilocybin and the, uh, mechanism by which psilocybin works on the brain. Um, in the years that followed, I learned everything I possibly could about psilocybin. Um, I read as much of the research that I could understand, uh, and I've actually recently taken a class on general neurobiology just to be able to understand some of the research. Um, when ballot measure one oh nine passed in two thousand and twenty in the state of Oregon, I texted one of my friends and I said, uh, I don't know what I'm feeling, but it feels like even though things aren't okay now, maybe they'll be okay in the future. And he responded, uh, I think what you're describing is hope. Um, this is what measure one oh nine offers, it offers hope for me and others who are in the same boat. Uh, hope for those of us who are too intimately familiar with hopelessness. Um, so I'm asking this council to reconsider this ordinance, to reconsider putting access to medical care up to a vote. Um, I personally won't be affected either way, right? I live in Gresham, but.
Twenty seconds.
Um, I know exactly what it feels like to be out of options and out of hope. And my empathy extends to those in Sandy for whom access to clinically administered psilocybin would very literally be life-saving. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. All right, well, thank you to both who gave us public testimony here tonight. Um, with that, I will now call for a staff recap of recommendation.
Uh, no big recommendation, uh, Mayor, this is up to the discretion of the council. Um, and as was indicated at the previous meeting, uh, the council has the option of, you know, rescinding its, uh, prohibition, if you do choose to do it at a future date without having to go to the voters again. Um, and then if Chris Green is on the line, if he wants to add anything. Uh, no, nothing else for me, there.
Hey, thank you. All right, are there any questions for staff or Chris, or do we wanna close and then go into discussion?
Let's close, no discussion.
Okay, is there a motion to close?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Just for a second.
Sure.
There's a motion, uh, by Council Smallwood and a second by Council Exner to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays. Motion carries, all right, we're in discussion. What's your thoughts?
So, first thought. There's nothing in this that prohibits or prevents someone from buying in another area and using it. Second thought, uh, and maybe this is one for you, Chris, but can we impose a tax? Or is the state already imposing a tax on these facilities?
There is no local option, there is no local option tax with the psilocybin.
Okay.
Unlike, unlike marijuana.
Yeah, that's, that was kind of, you knew where I was going with that.
Yeah.
That's correct.
And as I reflect on our conversation, you know, from a couple of weeks ago, too, is, is there's a lot of policy around this that we're still waiting to get implemented. Why we're looking to put it on the ballot for, for our voters as well.
Yes, um, I'll raise my hand a little bit. Uh, some of the circles that I work under, this is, uh, kind of a no-brainer, this should be prohibited in Sandy, not that that will make a difference in, I mean, Gresham and Portland, many other cities will continue to allow this to happen, or will can let this happen. But it is the message that, uh, we established many years ago when we said no to marijuana sales. And, uh, the folks that I have heard from seem to be in that same sort of mode with the psilocybin. Uh, you know, I am impacted by Shelley's conversation, because I know there are some people who just need to have those kinds of uh, chemicals and, and drugs to be able to get their way through some of these difficult things, and I appreciate that. Knowing that this is gonna be available in many other places. The part that bothers me is, is I, I don't want to see this as a, um, supervised, unwatched sales of things like this happening in Sandy. I guess I'd like to see the idea that as a drug, it has considerable impacts, if not treated correctly, will end up being misused. And, uh, I have to say, when I was in college, there was a number of folks that I was around that had tried psilocybin and it was not a positive experience, so.
Pleasure was not.
Was not.
But was there also not getting it from a physician?
It's true.
Prescribed.
Well, this doesn't necessarily mean from a physician.
That's right.
So, yeah.
Or prescribed.
Right, so if you look at marijuana distribution, doesn't have to be prescribed by a physician, you can just go in and purchase it. Um, you know, I, my other piece, if I could add my, my professional side to this is that with, anytime you implement something like this, you're gonna have increased incidence of police and other public safety entities being utilized. And so that's why I asked about fee, was when you have these establishments, um, you know, you choose to misuse and people will always choose to misuse. Uh, you're gonna have more police activity and there's no way for us to implement what that's gonna cost taxpayer.
Look back many years ago when we did, um, we talked, I don't know how many years in a row did we talk about, uh, marijuana, allowing it, not allowing it in Sandy. Sending that out, uh, to go in, you know, and people spoke aloud. And to this day, I hear, uh, the thank yous that we didn't allow that here to. We are a tourist town and on the way over to the mountain, so a lot of things, it stopped here, a lot of things, uh, come, uh, we have a lot of gas stations here, we have a lot of other things here, right? So, um, that's what we were thinking of at the time there, because we were told by many that we would be, you know, have be a, a, a big hub for, uh, uh, the sale of that for going over the mountain or going camping, whatever it may be outside of that. And just even more, you know, recently is, is, uh, uh, people like, hey, where can I get it? No, you can't, you need to go outside into the county, and so they did on the way out, you probably stopped at Wilters or whatnot, but, uh, people in our community have expressed to me the, uh, thank you for, and I was like, well, it was the vote of the people that we did shepherd the for that to go that route. I did hear what Shelley said, and I do appreciate, uh, your comments, I really do, it, it doesn't go falling on deaf ears, but um, we heard, uh, similar things about marijuana, marijuana, and those type of things, uh, back in the day. As we look at our city in, in, in we see ourselves as a little, uh, differently than maybe Gresham or Portland or even Wilters too, so.
Well, I'll be one to say, I still have a lot to learn on this issue, uh, and, you know, with, uh, all of it. And I'm still learning different, you know, hearing different things about marijuana that I didn't know ten years ago, some good, some really not, you know? Uh, very good, I think what I do know, though, is, is I don't feel like as a small community, we have to lead the way, you know? In, in, in every avenue and in avenues like this, I mean, sometimes it does make sense to see things kind of flesh out a little bit before you act and open it up to. Um, so with that, I, I, I kind of stand with the general direction, I, I mean, and I hear everything that's talked about here tonight. Please know it's not on deaf ears at all, you've got me thinking, certainly. Um, and I hope on the ballot, I hope that a lot of people are thinking and talking about it, quite honestly, that's, that's what, you know, all this is about. So, you know, just for him, I'm good to support, like, yeah.
Yeah, um, I've not done extensive research or anything on this, but I have seen a couple of shows, um, about it on working public broadcasting where it folks, you know, used it. And I, you know, I believe that it's, um, a valid treatment of some of the medical issues those people are cert, are suffering from. It appeared to be, you know, helpful for them, and I'm supportive of anything that can help those folks, because there's so many, um, people out there that are not helped by certain medications, or it's the wrong dose or whatever. I think we just have this epidemic, um, health issue in our nation, especially in Oregon. Where people are not able to access good mental health care. Um, if this was just talking about in clinic, uh, over oversight and use in a, in a clinical setting. I, I would, my, my answer would be totally different. But having the, these kind of, basically you can drive in and buy some and, you know, hop in and, you know, keep driving or whatever. Where it's not controlled and it's not, you know, it is, it isn't something, it, it, you know? It, it apparently does quite a bit of a number on your, you know, brain function and your ability to think clearly. And it's a pretty strong drug from what I, you know, could guess, and so I guess having it, you know, having clinics where people just buy it and it's not prescribed and it's not overseen. Um, and the folks are out there driving or whatever. It's, that's, that's kind of a bridge too far for me, so I support the way we're doing, and I think we'll learn more about it. And I don't, you know, I don't agree with the, you know, decriminalization of all the, you know, meth and opiates and all that that we already have, because I think that doesn't help us at all. And adding mushrooms to that list is probably, um, not any bigger help. So if it was just clinical use, um, and oversight, I would support it, and I think that's hopefully how people will use it, because I think it is important for them to have that option, it's very important.
Okay, uh, Jeff, can we get the first reading, please?
Yes, Mayor, this is ordinance twenty-two dash eighteen, an ordinance declaring a prohibition of psilocybin service centers and the manufacture of psilocybin products in the city of Sandy.
Is there a motion?
Question, are we talking option one with, um, a permanent ban, or are we talking limited duration?
The direction from the council last time, uh, Council Exner, was to go forward with the, with the permanent prohibition, with the acknowledgement that it could be rescinded by the council in the future.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I know what I'm voting for.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the first reading?
I'll make a motion to accept the first reading.
For a second.
I'll second.
Right, there's a motion, uh, by Counselor Smallwood to, uh, approve the first reading of ordinance twenty-two slash eighteen, and a second by Counselor Exner. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nays. Motion carries, uh, Jeff, we go as a second reading.
Yes, this is ordinance twenty-two dash eighteen, an ordinance declaring a prohibition of psilocybin service centers and the manufacture of psilocybin products in the city of Sandy.
Is there a, uh, motion to, uh, to approve the second reading of ordinance twenty-two dash eighteen?
I make a motion that we approve the second reading of motion twenty-two dash eighteen.
For a second.
I'll second.
So, a motion by Counselor Pete's old, uh, to approve the second reading, there's a second by Counselor Exner. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays. Motion carries, thank you, thank you, the public testimony is.
Mayor, just as a reminder, we also have a accompanying resolution that is the ballot title and language and direct staff to file with the county office.
Okay, so.
Just a motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash nineteen.
Is there a motion to approve resolution twenty-two slash nineteen?
Can I get a little context from last meetings on, on this and the timing for needing it to be in this election versus next, from what Stan was saying? Waiting to see things pan out, what, what's the?
The timeline for when this would go into effect?
Or the timeline of what?
It goes before the voters.
Well, go in front of the voters in twenty, November eighth, twenty twenty-two, which is in a few months from now.
Right.
Uh, but is there requirements from the state on any of that, or?
Yeah, I mean, we, we would be following the states, um, uh, the deadline, let me back up. Um, to answer your question, yes, um, there's a really tight timeline, actually, to get this done. If the council want this, wants this prohibition to be in effect before the anticipated date that licenses will be granted in January. So to be on the ballot on November eighth, we have to have this, well, the ordinance has now been approved. Um, we'll do the seven-day challenge period, um, which will allow us to file with the county before the state imposed deadline of September eighth, I believe. To get the final language, which is the ballot title, the explanation.
State for the ballot there, but.
Right.
If we don't, what I'm asking is, is, is it, I wasn't here for the last discussion on getting it for this November or following, say, uh, year in the future, is there something that the state is requiring us to do before January first? Because we, we've put a whole lot of ban, if you should, council could change that, that what, what was the discussion around the?
So I, I think what is it, what is it?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think, I think what he's getting at is, does it have to go on for this, like, upcoming election? Or does this moratorium stand if it goes to the next one? Is that kind of what you're getting at?
Yeah, because I wasn't here to.
Does it have to go to this election?
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Council Pete told, if I may.
Yeah, please.
It, it has to be on the November ballot every other two years, it's the note, the November ballot and a general election. So if you don't make the ballot for this, uh, So if you don't make the ballot for this uh November twenty twenty-two, you wouldn't be able to put it on the ballot again until November of twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Um, significantly though, you can repeal it at any time. There's no law that says if it's uh enacted by the voters, it has, it can only be repealed by the voters. It becomes a city ordinance like any other ordinance. And if a year from now or a month from now or fifteen months from now, you decide to repeal it, you can always do that. But it, the prohibition can only be enacted at a um general election in November.
I guess the question comes to the council. What was the intent for having it this November, this is more in future voting? Yeah, it feels like it was, we wanted to see how it panned out around the uh, the state. Uh, just waiting, you know, or putting out a ballot in three months or whatever is. You're aware of, I see much of that anyways, because it doesn't come into effect in next, next January.
Well, and he brings up, he brings up a good point. I'll apologize for missing the last meeting as well. But like, if we look at the decriminalization of, of the drugs that was on the last ballot, those drugs have been decriminalized. But the state did not have the ample opportunity or time to implement a lot of the, a lot of the programs that they wanted to implement. And they still have not implemented those programs. And so now we have decriminalization with no means of dealing with it. And so I wouldn't necessarily disagree that maybe it worth considering not getting it on this ballot, waiting to see what the state does. And then looking at doing it at a later date, provided it means that we don't have to worry about any of these coming in the town before that.
Some of the differences with the marijuana one was that we were, we were following along some other types of Jeff, glad bandits.
Just a quick question for the city's during, I mean, I'm, now that I understand where you're going with this councillor, I, the um, you know, the text of the ordinance that we just passed. And specifies this next election. So we, we certainly, I just want to make that clear.
With the one that we just passed or the one we're going to pass?
No, the one we just.
Oh, going. The wording is all.
It's in both. Yeah.
Okay, I missed it. Sorry, I apologize. I brought it up there.
And just to be clear for me, so we're voting to prohibit it at this time and also put it on the ballot for this November possibly. And if people in Sandy vote to not prohibit it, we can either maintain our prohibition or roll it back.
If the, if the voters um, the vote know, then the ordinance just doesn't take effect.
Yeah.
That's on.
It's written into the ordinance that it only goes into effect if the voters approve it.
This actually was one of the reasons why I, I am in favor of that, because that was kind of the way it was with the marijuana. It was a very small amount, but there was still the vote was. Basically, they didn't want to see the marijuana sold in the city. So we enacted the code to make, match their will, I guess is the word. This is kind of what I see this one too. So I think at this point though, I, I thought that the vote was for beyond everything else, let's put it on this November.
That's what it is.
It is.
Okay, so I just want to make sure Jeremy's.
Well, I wasn't at the last meeting to, to know the discussion on that and the comment, you know, like figuring, and then learning a little bit more as we talk.
Sure.
Figuring out what the state's going to do as brought up, you know, by Lori, you know, they haven't got their. That's a row for some of the other things that got passed that uh, you know, wanting to see how it pans out before we did that. Because I think it was a great comment Stan that you made, like, let's figure out what the rest of the state's gonna do. We have abandoned it, so that's why I bring it up.
And do we save money by rolling along with the ballot?
This is our last chance spell. So the, the way this was presented, this is our last chance to prohibit it.
That's what, so.
But we can always bring it back.
OHA will start issuing licenses we anticipate in January.
Right.
Sure. So if it's not put on this next ballot, then licenses could be granted.
Even though we banned it?
During that period when it's not.
Even though we banned it.
So then it is on. Well, so now hang on. So, and again, I apologize for not being, but so as a city council, we can't say we're prohibiting this.
It's written into the state law that a council can only prohibit it if it's approved by the voters.
Okay, thank you. That, that's the statement.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
No, that, that, that fills in.
This whole conversation.
Okay, sorry. Again, I apologize for.
Stan, now Stan can stop pulling his hair out.
Sorry, I, that, that one, that one, that one line I, I didn't catch. All right.
But is there any rational rationale for not putting it on this November and waiting another two years?
Not from that line.
Not from that line. Okay.
Now, that, so I moved that we approved this first reading.
No, this is a resolution.
Yep, sorry.
We're just, this resolution approves the ballot language.
For it.
Yeah, we're just.
So for, you don't need to read.
No reading, just.
Oh, I make a motion that we approve uh, uh, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash nineteen.
For a second.
I'll second it.
All right. And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nays.
We're very thorough.
Motion carries. All right, uh, moving forward, report for the city manager.
Would you like to uh implement our change of the agenda now and?
Oh, yes.
Consent agenda quickly.
We're on the consent agenda.
Rich, and we're not.
And we didn't have.
Because they weren't asked the last.
Uh, so I need, unless there's a lot of discussion.
I made a motion to adopt it.
Adopt the consent agenda.
So I need a second.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion by councillor Exner and a second by councillor Sheldon to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed nays. And.
Stain.
Stain. All right, report from the city manager.
All right, uh, mostly just want to highlight a couple of community events that are coming up um in the next several days. And recap uh Saturday's events. We had the first movies in the park of the season. Sounds like there was about seventy-five people in attendance, so a great turnout for the first one um this season. We have National Night Out tomorrow at six P M um off of highway two twelve. Address is available online or I can read it to you if you'd like.
Whose land is that? That's not public land.
It's not public land. It's D thirty-one, D thirty-one foundation, I think, owns that property, yeah. Um.
She's expecting about three thousand people.
I heard a big turnout. I hadn't heard a number till, so two, three thousand.
We're doing traffic mitigation, local residents.
I guess we'll have the police uh. Yeah, we'll have the police out there, transit's doing free rides on trolley.
Yeah, all right, cool.
Um, summer sounds kicks off on Wednesday, so we'll have that this Wednesday. The second one is the following Wednesday, August tenth. Um, employee picnic on August eleventh at four P M. And then the final movie in the park, uh, August twentieth. So we've got kind of a jam packed August filled with full staff. Uh, you know. Activities as well as greater community activities. Looking forward to that. Awesome. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Carl.
Uh, not very much. Um. I, I don't know if I see an increase in truck, truck traffic or just I see, saw in the last two weeks now, I've seen uh. That's counting, but and there's no statistical analysis of it. There's some pretty good sized trucks going down Langin Sand. Uh, we're talking eighteen wheelers, uh, like don't have a measuring device to know how heavy they are, but certainly they look like they're heavyweights, so. I know we talked about restricting and finding a way on Langin Sand and the Barco. I, I just don't want to see us go back into the mode of damaging the road again. So if we could carry on, move forward, that would really be. The uh important thing to do that. And um, other than the fact that I have a forty-fifth anniversary coming up Saturday. How many years was it for you?
Yes, like a number thirteen.
Thirteen. So I have forty-five.
Yeah, yeah.
That's it for me.
Nice, nice, Carl. Kathleen.
Um, I don't have too much. We've got a library or meeting, kind of taken part of the summer off. And there's one scheduled in September, but the library folks are doing a great job at holding all sorts of events for the kids and adults in the community. Um, I am working with uh Jeff and uh my Kelly's back from vacation now, just to kind of ask those questions that I was asked, asking at the end of our last meeting. Beginning or whatever it was, just concerning kind of how we get the numbers on density and um, and all that. So um, yeah, I just have, you know, we're, we'll have, that, that'll be really helpful for all of us to understand how that works. So um, other than that, I. Uh, we had a great cruise in breakfast. Um, we ran out of food and it was great to see so many community members there. And, and we really appreciate all the support that was given in the way of donations and sponsors for um, the whole event. Very nice. It was great to be back and serve breakfast again.
Thank you.
Rich.
Yeah, uh, so first thing, uh. Keep talking about the trucks. Like, are we, are we ever gonna get like a, a resolution to find that out?
Because of the large trucks on.
Yeah, to make that.
Yeah. I will follow up on that. Yeah, I, I'll follow up on that.
He's getting brought up, but like, I've seen like zero traction on that. Um, speaking of traction though, I would like to say, um, thank you. I saw that Public Works uh installed the crosswalk that I, that I kept asking about. There's now big letters down there since, but it's been crossing over there at Barco. Um, and the thing, and so it's a, it's very homework. So thank you. Um, the uh, the last thing is uh, the uh, chamber uh asked me to reach out. Chris couldn't be here today because she's under the weather. Um, but the uh, Free Up Sandy, Free Up Storage, uh, which is the one over there off of. Bonnie Champion by Arco and all that, is having their grand opening ribbon cutting um at twelve thirty. To see anybody that can tune in. I say it's that. Said at twelve thirty, I'm assuming, I, I actually, I'll get you back to that in just a second. I think it's tomorrow.
Right, uh, let's see, Parks and Trails is going to uh take a tour of all the parks uh not this coming Wednesday, but following Wednesday. So it'll be about a two hour tour. I think you can sing a song to that.
Going right now.
And uh, and then just kind of a, kind of a general housekeeping. Um. And maybe it got, maybe it was out in a staff report or got brought up and really didn't pay for you. I'd sent an email to Jordan, he responded, but um. Some of the developments with the businesses or with that business on three hundred and sixty second with that. It would have been nice for council to have gotten some updates on the fact that we were going to pay for storage of their equipment for a year and a whole bunch of other stuff, because I got blindsided by members of the community and had no answers. And I really despise that. So um, so yeah, if there can be a way that we can get updated on things as they progress. Um, so that those questions aren't asked and then I have to find out what it is that we're doing. So that would be great.
Didn't know that on this end.
I don't think any of us do.
How much of that was kind of top secret with the whole negotiations though?
Well, what, at least some of that's state law.
Well, some of it's state law. And so I, I, I mean, so we have to do it for a year, but then so therefore I don't feel that that should have been super top secret. That should have been information that could have.
Once the negotiations are true.
Right.
What's the reason for secrets?
Yeah.
And we don't know state law, so that's what we.
Well, and that's why it just would have been nice, just an update. That's all, just an update on that information. Because again, I had a couple of people in the community come up to me and I'm like, uh, nah, nah.
It sounds like you've been updated.
I've now been updated, yes.
But the rest of the council maybe.
Yeah, but just maybe moving forward, you know, in general with that, with, when those kinds of things happen that, hey, by the way, you know.
Absolutely.
We're gonna get hassled, not hassled in a bad way, but you know, people are gonna ask questions. Yeah, and I also don't want to give off wrong information, so.
I'll work with staff to make sure we get a, an updated email out to the council as a whole, so you're all on the same page. With correct numbers and all that.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep.
That's it.
All right, um, we had a uh Economic Development Committee meeting last Wednesday. Uh, we met with our consultant um about doing the uh. Surveying us again on uh, you know, what we want to see as a community uh the second time around. And we'll be doing that with other groups like they've done before. Um, that took up the entire meeting there. I have a question about garbage trucks. Um. So. The garbage trucks have been coming out, starting out at five thirty in the morning.
So they said.
Did, did I get it? I missed a notice because.
They put it out on social media because of the heat that they were gonna be starting.
This has been more than one time. This is.
Should have been the whole week.
No, 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 no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Multiple weeks. So, yes, before you're supposed to have your garbage out by seven A M. Do it before then, but don't leave it out all night. Then they don't come back and pick it up.
Right.
Something is now twice and they come, you know, your windows are open, it's loud, beep 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 beep, you know, with the kids up and all the other stuff at five thirty or earlier in the morning. I think it's a little bit now, that was only the garbage, recycling and all the others came, you know, they came later. But anyways, it's a little bit uh, what, social media is not enough.
I'm not disagreeing.
And council should probably know if they're gonna do that so that we can inform, because I got other people doing the same thing going, what's going on?
Yeah.
Why is these garbage trucks? That's why I'm not.
Residents has a lot of trash stashed up here.
You know, I had some relatives with babies and babies come with diapers and diapers.
I'll talk to the uh operations manager with Hoodview. They did reach out to me um Monday of last week, asking if they could start their collections beginning on Tuesday earlier due to the heat. Um, and they were gonna notice that on their social media channels.
We put it in ours.
I think. Communication on our end, yeah.
Because it's one thing, but if they have constantly beep 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 beep, and then anyway, it's.
Yeah, so we, staff was only aware of, of this week. So if it's been happening, you know, beyond that, then I'll follow up and.
And I'm cognitive of the heat. That's not it. But is it more of them telling you what they're gonna do or asking for permission?
Um, it was an ask.
Okay.
For permission, although phrased in the sense that, you know, all of our other communities are doing this in conjunction with the county's.
Well, I just, I have this feeling sometimes when they come, it's more of a demand.
No, it wasn't a demand. It was, yeah.
They had, it was an ask and. Anyways, I just, I don't know why it's, it's a little sensitive, but uh, it's been, but it's been more than the one because we're out running. And um, and I know what, so.
They have that app now as well that, that gives alerts on when there are gonna be service changes as well.
I, I know I have it. I didn't say.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's.
But anyway, I honestly, maybe I'll go checking it.
Well, the trash falls under my purview, so I will forward other things that we talked about. The trash falls under my uh jurisdiction, so I will follow up and.
Okay, so it should be back to a, a normal, it was just for the last week of the heat.
A couple of things for me. Well, I saw on the Andy over in Transit, this great article that uh Public Broadcasting did on kind of ride share and public transit, kind of the new way, and you know, we got all these big buses flung around and we pay for gas and everything on when really, what if we just had an app, Uber style? You know, it had kind of these different transit deals going around and picking people up and taking them around, a lot more cost effective. And of course, Andy's already on it, you know, he's already looked, been thinking about it, looking at it. And, you know, not gonna just move that direction, but you know, phase in some of that stuff, which is, I thought, pretty cool. Um, I had an opportunity last week to join David and Kelly and the new owner of the R S uh Smith Building, the, the blue building there. And kind of do a little bit of a, just an introduction walk around. Uh, really nice guy. Um, you know, a lot of the communication between staff and him goes to, if I paint it, what is, what else do I gotta start doing? What does that trigger, you know? And so they're figuring a lot of that stuff out. But um, been really happy with this, the conversation and, and the teamwork between the two, the meeting, our team members here at the city and, and the new owner. Uh, you might have seen some of the stuff up on the windows about maybe bringing in a brewery or a distillery. You know, I get the sense that that's kind of him taking our general direction on that, you know, uh, he, he's totally up for it. He believes that kind of most marketable for, thing for that, that space would be either some sort of like a high end type grocery type deal. Think of like a Green Zebra or a Zoom pant, you know, smaller Zoom pants thing, or even like an office type space where you, you split it up into different offices and run it out, not, not like a shared space, but kind of that general concept. Yeah, you know, and, and my general, just in the back and forth was, is, you know, I think all of us as councillors, we have our own little personal, you know, things we'd like to see. But I think more natively, we just want to see that stretch really start to develop and go and see some stuff happening. So uh, real conver- a good conversation there, was really happy with it. Uh, anyway, just want to update everybody on that. Had an opportunity to watch S K the city council meeting, the last one. I know I'm a dork. But the reason I bring it up at this meeting is it was kind of an interesting conversation because you have a part of the community that just a couple of years ago. Was screaming and yelling. They want a splash pad. Why don't we have our splash pad? That's an amenity that our community deserves and demands. Well, then the council they put together, they get the splash pad and guess what they're hearing? None of the local residents in that neighborhood want the splash pad in their backyard. And so I I just, I bring that up to say they're all going, holy smokes, ran for election because everyone said they wanted a splash pad. Now nobody wants it in their backyard. We just got to be careful not to just listen to the loudest voice in the room at any given time, you know. Today, it's about this pool and the community campus. Tomorrow, it's about the fact that the pool's getting built and bigger and better right in my backyard. It's always going to be said, what we need to be doing is making decisions what's best for our community as a whole holistically and the need. So is this a point that I wanted to bring up? We have night out coming up. That was mentioned on Tuesday night. On Wednesday should be beautiful for the for musics in the park. Just to close us out on all that. What an awesome weekend last weekend, not the really hot one, but the one before Kathleen mentioned it. She was out there volunteering with the Quanis doing the car show Friday night. La Happy had a a live concert under a cover structure. Saturday night, you could go down to. To Smokey Hearth and they had a concert going on under their deal. There is a farmer's market going on 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 Sunday here in town. I mean, guys, I mean, that's what it's all about, you know, and and everything that we do here on Monday nights and beyond are a big, big thing that helps those things going. So just really excited and proud of our community there. So with that, thank you, everybody. Yeah.
Thursday, August.
Yes. Oh, August fourth for the ribbon cutting.
Noon to two.
Noon to two, August fourth. All right, cool. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.